Shake out the comm.
If we will come to work, if we could please rise and sweep the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we get the roll call?
Mrs. Simonero?
Here.
Mrs. Sade here, Mrs. Hartzell?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Protz?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
And Mr. Fodaskin?
Here.
And Mr. Basil?
Here, thank you. Under announcements, this meeting is being recorded. We'll be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel and potential litigation. And public comment, the instructions for public comment are right on the front page. And if you have any questions or concerns, please bring them up at those times during the budget, or during the agenda. Sorry, I still have the budget on my mind. Having said that, are there any public comments? On the agenda items? Okay, great. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. I just would have everybody wind their clocks back, especially on the board. If you remember last year, we had massive parking project going on, getting ready to open the stadium. This summer, it's been completely the opposite, very, very quiet. It's been a relatively quiet summer. We ran summer school classes at the high school this year from the 27th to the 29th of July, or June 27th to July 29th for approximately 18 students. We also held our annual extended summer or extended school year program for approximately 60 students with special needs. Had a chance to stop by that program during the summer. The kids looked like they were having a good time. That program ended on August 4th. Our high school band has started its summer band camp, if you've had a chance to see them in action. And our fall sports teams officially start their summer practices next Monday, which is August 15th. Just on a side note, related to our activities, the implementation of the activity fee process has gone very smooth. I've been keeping you up to date on what we've been doing. This is, Michelle Goss is doing a good job of that. And I had a conversation with her today, and there have been really no issues or any complaints from anybody so far, so. So far, so good on that. You'll let me move on to B, in terms of, this is kind of our kickoff for the year. August is always kind of our official start. We have our administrative preparations for next year to open school on August 30th. Our first admin council will be in this room Wednesday morning. Teachers will start reporting for flex days between the 12th of August and August 24th. August 25th and the 29th are our teacher service days. And our opening day for students is Tuesday, August 30th. So it's not very far away until we get the next school year started. So that concludes my report under this section.
I just had a question.
Sure.
And I'm not sure who would really answer the question. It came to my attention during the heat wave that we had in early July, and we had this issue when we had graduation. The temperature on that ass of the turf field gets exceedingly hot, and...
I don't know what it is, but it does get warm.
Right. And I'm just kind of curious, how is that handled with the kids that are practicing on the fields? Because, you know, we had an instance during the ceremony where somebody needed some medical attention, just sitting there at 7:00 o'clock at night. And I'm just thinking, these kids are out there practicing on the field. It could be over 100 degrees on the field itself. I've heard people tell me stories where, particularly where the turf, it gets so hot, kids can burn their hands or their knees, that sort of thing on the turf because it's that hot. So I'm just...
It's something we can look into. I would assume, and this is just an assumption on my part, that the coaches are probably trying to have their practices as early as they can to mitigate that heat.
Yeah.
But I would actually, Mr. Miller, do you have any, I mean, any input on that?
Bob Hartzell, trainer, is monitoring that at all times. He's out there whenever the teams are out there. So he is on top of it. He doesn't advise them when the temperature's too high and puts it off the field.
Okay. All right. Other questions? No, that was my only concern.
Public?
We'll save that against curriculum instruction.
Okay. Under curriculum and instruction, given that we now have a curriculum and instruction committee, we have not really formally published the schedule of different topics that we would bring up throughout the year. We will bring that up as a proposed discussion item on the agenda for the first curriculum instruction meeting, which is the first Thursday of September. No?
Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
Can you explain that a little bit? See, the committee normally...
Well, we, if you remember last year...
...discuss what they're going to discuss.
We had given you a list of different topics that we had put under. Two years ago, we started this curriculum instruction. And then we actually went ahead with a full committee. So they're kind of a duplicate of the process now. So what I'd like to do is, in committee, talk about what we might want to bring here and what you might want to talk about then as a committee.
Okay. I know that one of the things that we had left over and that we were going to start discussing when we got back was the requirement for athletes, whether it be one course or two failures or one failure, or no failures. Depending on how aggressive we wanted to be and the focus we wanted to discuss that a little bit. So, and I got a bunch of data from...
So you're talking about athletic eligibility?
Correct.
I don't know if it would just be athletic, it would be all...
It would be all eligibility, right.
Activity eligibility, so to speak.
Right. Because in that list that I got, there was a surprisingly lack of... It was very visible, the coaches that really held their students accountable and those that, I don't want to say didn't, but you didn't see a lot of football players' names on that list. You didn't see a lot of basketball players' names on that list in sports.
Well, I don't want to speculate as to why, but we can certainly investigate that.
Right. Well, either that or you hold them accountable.
Right.
You know, those are kind of, we'll get some input from the coaches as to where they'd like to see it also.
Okay.
So is that first meeting September 7th?
That's the first Wednesday.
Are we changing them to Wednesdays permanently, or just...
They were always Thursday.
I apologize, I thought it was Wednesday.
Actually, Wednesday would work there for me in September. I just think it helps it's permanent or not.
We had, we had kind of established, I think, the first Monday for facilities, second, first Thursday for curriculum instruction, revenue enhancement is the second Wednesday. So we kind of had standing dates, if you want to change those, and now's a good time to talk about that.
Wednesday or Thursday better for you?
You don't want to fight?
Thursday's normally fine. I just have, I have to prepare for the material for work, and it happens to be the first Thursday in September, but...
Our newest member?
Yeah, I'm flexible.
But if Thursday works better for everybody, I keep it Thursday.
If we can leave here tonight with a date, we'll get it posted.
Well, can we, so that Mrs. Dardowski can at least attend, can we do it the first Wednesday?
It's up to you.
In September, and then we can discuss what the next date is from there on out. That way we can...
So the kickoff meeting will be September 7th?
That would work there for me.
But that would be September 7th?
Right, the Wednesday, okay.
And would that be at 7?
Here. 7:00 PM here.
Here.
Excellent. That's it?
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none?
All right. Quite a bit to report here. The modular unit of the stadium has been an adventure, as I've been keeping you updated all summer. We got as far as having to get Brian Subers involved. I did receive what is hopefully some good news today, and hopefully, I hate to jinx it, so I'm just going to say we've turned a corner. So I'm hoping by very shortly that it'll be on the road and on its way. But the problem has been, and I want to thank Mr. Smith for all his hard work in trying to get these... We had no idea really what this entailed, but since it's such a large unit, you've got to get all these kind of highway clearances from the Department of Transportation in each state. And the main problem has been the construction on different bridges and roads that doesn't allow for passage. They have to chart a course, so in anticipation of that, we've worked with the township, and they have granted us a 30-day extension for the stadiums. If you remember, the opening of the stadium was predicated on that modular being in place. They have allowed us to go ahead. So what we'll do is, we'll just have to bring back the portable unit that we had had before until we can get the, this modular unit finally installed. So it's been an adventure. I don't know what else to say.
Mr. Smith, anything to add? I mean, I mean, um... He doesn't want to talk about this one.
As you recall, we did have a little bit of a problem in the D area of the stadium with some problems with the synthetic surface. That repair work has been completed, and actually, I believe they did a very good job. Just down looking at it today, about 4:00. The line striping is completed, and the area is starting to blend and fade in. The stadium landscaping, we had some issues with some dead evergreens that have been removed, and the new trees will be replanted with by August 30th. The evergreens that were dead were at as a result of something called pine bark beetles. The rest of the trees have been sprayed to prevent further spread. So there's been no further spread of the beetles. We are not going to replant trees in the rain garden in the fall. The way that the spring in the ground is softer and the rooting can take place. In terms of the APC boiler, everything's been disconnected there that we can do. Company Blansky, they will start in the beginning of September and be completed and functional by the end of September. We really won't need it before this time. And if we do have the other boiler that is functional to use for the light heat that might be required.
Anything to add to that?
As far as grounds, we're watering as we need to, and we'll be lining all fields this week. All the buildings will be ready to go by August 30th. Ken's crews are working very hard to make sure everything's done on time. And generally, we've established a priority of general maintenance, trying to get to the things that are most important first. All the filters have been changed in the buildings, and unit events at BEC have been cleaned, and we're pretty much ready to go. A little bit different atmosphere than last summer in terms of facilities, so. That concludes the report on the facilities.
Another question. With the high heat that we've had this summer, did we have any of those days where we were asked to shut down the power in some of those buildings?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we had one event, July 22nd. We had a call for mandatory curtailment for a DR program, which I believe brings us in some revenue then, correct? Yes. We don't know how much that is yet, but... Yeah, Full House, Lawson. But again, with some of the cuts we've had to suffer, Ken's crews have been really doing a good job. I'd like to commend them publicly for all the hard work.
Absolutely. Any other comments from board members? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, moving on to finance?
Really not much to expound upon past what's written on the agenda. There are a couple attachments, one and two. If you look at those, you can see some exonerations have taken place, especially for those Keystone Opportunity Zones. Those are automatics. Some minor exonerations under attachment two. And as far as the solicitor retainer, there have been no changes in the rates, so nothing will change it. We'll simply bring forward the retainer for approval at the voting meeting this August.
Would it be possible to get a breakdown as to what we, because the way the retainer was written, we have basically three sections. The basic retainer, additional services, and then specialized services.
Sure, I can talk to you.
And they have different rates. And would it be possible to get a sense as to what we spent on the other areas?
Sure. I'm sure Mr. Subers can get something together for us by the 22nd.
And maybe they can break that down into subject matter, i.e. construction or collective bargaining or special ed.
I think we had done something on that before.
Last year at this point.
Yeah. So I just think that should be sort of like an annual thing that we do, get a sense as to where the legal costs are for those things.
We'll get that for you as soon as we can get it from the box rough job.
Any comments from the board members? Any public comment? Seeing none, moving on to number nine, personnel.
Just want to point out item 1A, A1A. There are a number of teachers, I believe it's three or four at this point, three that we know of. Well, today was the deadline, so it's three, who have decided they will be retiring effective June 30th of this current school year. We'll post those names and have you vote on them on August 22nd. As far as the rest, we have some resignations, one worthy of note, A2C. As you all know, as I've informed you, Mrs. Stevens will be resigning effective August 12th. She is returning to Iowa. As far as I know, has a similar position already secured in Iowa. That's where her family's originally from. So that's, we'll be discussing that item with you because there are some implications in our executive session. As far as the rest of them, B1, nothing to add there.
How are we to understand that building?
Yeah, that was my question.
Well, she's out only... B1A.
Oh, she's, she's back. That was just a temporary...
Oh.
She had a family situation she needed to take care of.
Well, normally, if you put it in here, it gives us the length of time that they're out in family medical care. I mean, to me, and I'm probably like Mrs. Sade here, I thought it was a...
Like extended, six months, whatever.
It was undetermined as to the status of the mother of it, only at the point she requested it, she knew it would be more than a couple of days. And it has turned out to be much shorter than we originally anticipated.
So do we need to amend that and maybe putting a period in time?
Well, she still has the time, because if the mother hasn't relapsed, according to the law, she'd get up to 12 weeks. But she would only, she's only using it. She's keeping it open in case the mother has another health issue.
Should I answer your question?
Shouldn't you put that in there, 12 weeks?
Margaret, the other, to answer your original question, since I opened it several times, I had said to Dr. Otto that if there was a situation where she was out, I'll just open it again. It's not an issue.
I assume that, but I'd like to make sure.
Maybe just say something like that, not to...
I still have my folder.
Would it be good to say maybe not to exceed 12 weeks, or is that just the law anyway?
That's the law.
No, I just thought she'd be out opening day.
Oh, no, 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 we have that covered.
We weren't sure.
Further questions on that? Item C1ABC are just some replacements, people that have gone. Items D and E, D on C1D, we're still interviewing and looking. Item E, the name will be filled in. We do have that person, we just didn't have time to fill that in for tonight. So we have that person replaced. Under F, the department chairs are posted for you. They have a little change in one of those based on conversation in the executive session as well. Coaches are posted for you, and the extracurricular attachments, three and four.
Dr. Otto?
Yes, sir.
For... C1D?
Yes.
Is the gap leave district, or is she going to another position?
Transferred.
Went to middle school.
Okay.
She was a transfer. And I had a question, D2A, is that correct? Because that doesn't look like a transfer man. It looks like it's the same.
D2A?
The original building, Margaret, that was on your June agenda, was incorrect, the way it was typed. And she had asked us to put it on so that she would be board-approved in her, the actual building she was going to do.
So what did we approve? Because it said Berksborough Elementary Center to Berksborough Elementary Center.
Oh, indeed, I'm sorry.
It said special ed aide, she's a 1-on-1 aide.
But that's, but that's what it's reading. It's reading the exact same.
No, no, the original one said, didn't it say building?
I think we need to get, however it was approved, and have that, if it was special ed aide, 3.5 to special ed 1-on-1, because right now it's reading, it's transferring.
It looks like to the same position, yeah.
Doesn't make sense.
We'll check that wording.
And also, the individual that we spoke about earlier, is that going to be on?
Yes. We only got the letter on Thursday, and Lori had already sent out the agenda.
Okay. Should the board know about that though?
I think it's part of the executive session.
Okay.
So under, getting back to transfers, D2A, B and C, obviously with a correction that will make an A, and B are changes that occurred since June, and E through I are cafeteria staff. So are there any questions on the rest of those? Those are all edited by John Grella.
Any other comments from board members?
How's our transfer of information going with the technology with Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Campbell? Mr. Campbell?
Right now, I've been in and exploring some of the upgrades. The official start date, of course, isn't until the 29th. But I think Mike and I are trying to do some crossover, make sure that we're prepared. Like I said, there's a big VMware project that's going on now. I'm going to be making sure for the next three days. And then for POS upgrade, point sales, software upgrade, actually going to make sure I'm in the following training. So we're trying to shove as much information in my head as possible before that goes.
Sounds like been here 30 years, I mean, how long do they think? Come on.
The learning curve will be steep, but Mike's been very good about it. And I think we've got to plan together and make sure it happens.
And his last day again is September 5th?
Any other board comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, on to 10.
Monthly enrollment, I did want to bring your attention that we are, it looks, if you look at the numbers from this point last year, we're down about 110 students. Well, I wanted to point out, however, though, was that we, the biggest impact there was we graduated 295 seniors, and we only brought in 243 kindergartners. So right there is 52 of that that makes sure that goes.
You're right, and the conception is advertising all-day kindergarten, a second all-day kindergarten class.
So for whatever reason, that's where the biggest impact is. The rest of it's spread out. Some of the grades are actually up, some are down a little bit, but the other 50 are spread out over 11 grades. So we'll just keep an eye on that and keep you posted. You have been given the revisions to the handbooks. There are very, very few of them. I think they're all in order, unless anyone has any questions on, they're all here this year, the high school, middle school athletics, and the band and choral.
I only had one question, and it's on the high school. And it's only because I know last year a situation came up, and it's regarding dance and prom guidelines. It says that currently, the handbook says the prom and dances are for high school students and their guests, so then you can approve, you know, get your guest approved and all that. Last year, there was an incident, several incidents, that middle school students wanted to get approved. They got approved, they had to get approved from their sending school, which would have been Mr. Henkel. And then when they went to the high school, they were like, no, you can't, middle school students aren't allowed to come. Now, if that's the policy, let's just say no middle school students. Because once they get approved at one building, it creates a lot of family chaos, and girls have bought dresses, and then they're crying, and so I don't know if...
Mr. Miller?
It's the poli...
I can't comment on that without talking to Mr. McElmough.
If it needs to say guests, high school age and above, or something, but I think you need to clarify, so we don't have an issue. Because I don't want to get the calls come homecoming. And a lot of times, it sounds like it depends on who the student might be, and who they know. It's just, just make it clear.
Well, I'll bring up admin council on Wednesday. Other questions on any parts of the handbook? Okay, items C, D, E and F are formalities for approval. Mrs. Trainer, did you want to add anything as far as the grants?
No, it's just part of the requirements from auditors that, as you know, the agenda read in May, where I asked you to approve, that I would submit for grants, and then you accept the money. The accountability grant, as you know, is one that just opened at the end of July. And so it's a little bit different in that it wasn't open-ended. You had to apply for the same categories and specific activities that you did in 1011. So it was just extensions of the 1011 ABG, but we did have to reapply. So I did submit that application, and it was approved last week. So we have 154.
Which is probably about what from last year? 250,000?
It was just about 400,000, no.
That concludes...
Any comments from the board? Seeing none? Any comments from the public?
David Cole, 443 Gilroy, Douglasville. I'm a little confused about this, the accountability grant money, and all of the different grant monies that apparently came in after the budget approval. Can anybody explain just a little bit more in terms of what these different funds are going for? Thank you.
Ms. Trainer can do that.
Sure. Your Title I grant is specifically earmarked for low-level readers. We use it for kindergarten, first and second grade, and it pays for part of the reading specialist, the portion of the reading specialist salaries where they deal with those individual students. And it will also pay for some materials that those students get to be able to help them to come up to grade level in reading. And so they're identified through a group of assessment tests, and then they're given a little bit extra reading instruction during the course of the day. And so that's what that one's earmarked for. The Title II A is used for class size reduction, and so it pays one of the third-grade teachers' salaries so that we can reduce our class sizes. This year, they at least were able to be reduced to about 22 students. If we didn't have that other individual, they'd be about 28 in a class. And so that's typically the one that most school districts use. It pays part of the teacher's salary, but a portion of the teacher's salary. The accountability block grant, as I just mentioned, has to be an extension of what we did last year. And so a lot of that will be used for, we do some after-school tutoring for students who are scoring at basic or below basic on PSSA tests. It brings in some consultants to do staff development training. And again, we'll buy some materials for some courses where we might want to develop a new course that either could be at the high end to challenge students who have an enhanced ability, or it could be for a student that needs a remedial type of course.
And just for clarification, the Title I and Title II monies were included in the budget.
Right.
The accountability block was not.
Yeah, the block grant wasn't included at all.
Okay.
So it wasn't found money, I mean, we had to send the budget.
They were all in accounted for.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, moving on to policy.
We have for you a first reading of policy 914, school volunteers. And there are revisions to this policy which include language to reflect the implementation of the Raptor system for use with volunteer clearances. I am going to turn this over to Mrs. Trainer again, since she did the legwork in this. She can give you a brief summary of what that will mean.
We do have the system installed on a standalone computer in the district office and have the process in place. At this point, we are finalizing the design of, I'll call it, the badge that gets printed out. And it will have a picture of the individual, Daniel Boonary School District, and it will have a line that will say expires. And so, let's say, a year from today, we would date it 8/8/2012. It'll be laminated, and there's a clip, so it's actually a badge when they leave. And so they'll be able to use that for any classroom, band, chaperone for a class trip type of activity.
What is your definition of reasonably expected? In the policy, it says volunteers who may be reasonably expected to be present with students for extended periods of time. Should we not put some type of...
Deliniate that a little bit?
Put something there? I mean, your definition of reasonable extended period, mine are different. Mine is anybody along with a student without a teacher present for 30 seconds should go through the system.
I can make it more specific here, if you're interested.
Good comment? Anyone move on to number B?
Sure. Wanted to, I understand there was some concern that came up in this regard, and to try to deal with that, we actually held a meeting. Mrs. Penz was at that meeting with me this summer, with our transportation contractors to review the use of the motor coaches, the large buses, like the Bieber buses and the big Klein buses, when we have large group tours and trips. Our past practice, just, and what I found out here, and Mrs. Trainer, we're talking about this today, has always been to work with them before we, but actually solicit the coaches from another company. Apparently, the problem that we have encountered is that, I think Klein is fairly booked pretty far in advance, and when they go to book the trip, sometimes Klein just doesn't have the number of buses that we need available, which is what deflects them then to go use another contractor. So I didn't, I don't know, given that information, if we really want to pass a formalized policy on that, or because we do have a past practice.
From transportation, I think we need to. There was very clear that there is a national safety, national transportation safety board rating on each one of the bus companies out there. And whether we use Klein or not, because they're booked, they should still, the company we use should still have a minimum safety rating. And several of the bus companies that we've used in the past that they brought up, we're not going to name them public, obviously, did not have what we would consider a safe rating. And this all came out in the light with the accident that happened in New York City.
And he did share that with us?
So I think we should have a minimum safety rating of any bus that we lease or rent outside of Klein, or, yeah.
Well, Klein is the one that has, actually has.
Yeah, they're the ones more. Yeah, but we should have something. We should, we should identify a minimum.
And that would apply to Klein as well?
Yes, yes. If they're slipped more than minimum, then they're no longer, I mean, we should adapt at a, a level. It's no different than anything else.
Because some of the organizations go outside the administration and sometimes cheaper fares, but the safety record isn't there on those bus companies.
Well, then we will go back and try to put something in writing to recognize that issue.
And I would go back to our, our partners and ask them, what would they consider a minimum?
Well, actually, we did have that conversation. So they gave us a whole packet and they, they showed us different companies and, but then I, you know, discussed it further with Mr. McElmore and Mrs. Trainer. It became that catch 22, that if you didn't, if you didn't schedule far enough in advance, you might not, Klein just won't have any buses.
That wasn't their, that wasn't their major complaint. They understand that and they understand that even if they had 20 buses available, if their fees, somehow their competitors were cheaper, they were more concerned that are we looking at the safety of the bus company than what we're allowing the students at? That wasn't the issue. The issue wasn't booking or even their losing business.
Yeah, they fully understand that if, if we call them up and say we need three buses for next Wednesday, they don't have three buses. They got, they have, they understand that. Their other concern was that we then go to another bus company that has a very poor safety rating, which was one concern. And the other concern is sometimes we never even came to them and asked them at all whether they're available. And they gave several examples.
And that does happen.
Okay, I guess, well, I mean, I'll take that to heart and we'll, we'll take a look at it and then come back with the plan.
I just think, I mean, the transportation committee basically, we just want to have a policy in place that says you're going to first go to our transportation partners with any request and A.
It's not a difficult policy to put together.
And B, anybody who's transporting kids has to meet whatever this.
They have a rating of a 10 or less or whatever.
Yeah, it's like, the lower, the lower the number, the better the, the safety rating.
Yeah, we saw detail, they have detailed charts that you could get on the.
Right, right. And then they show us that website. And that's the only thing we're recommending is that we.
Have a minimum threshold there.
All right, hopefully we'll get to start, start working on that in detail.
Moving on to C.
As far as teleconferencing, as we have begun to enter into doing more of that, during the month of July, I put out, as you're aware, we have the statewide PennLink service that we can use to gather different policy examples. We didn't get a huge response, but we did have some local examples and we also received about six policies from other districts across the state. And we will begin to draft the first reading for the month of September. They're, they're pretty standard. There's really not too much variation in them. It's just pretty much whatever the flavor of the board is when we, when we put it on paper.
Any comment from board members? Seeing none, any comment from the public?
I just gave my name. Is there any, is there going to be any attempts to get out in the newsletter or in any other media, the fact that, you know, like we're looking for volunteers, you know, you're welcome to come and volunteer. We've got all of these different categories of volunteer work that could be done.
We're working with the adoption program of volunteer.
That's not, Rob, now enhancements sort of work on.
Yeah, a little, yeah.
I don't know if there's something more media that you want to get out there on the website.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
I mean, we can, that's, that's fairly simple. It's a good idea.
I think that needs to come from, I mean, the administration and driving that down and even to the teachers to, to communicate that to parents, say, hey, look, you know, we could use a volunteer for this activity. It's the same thing with the coaches, or we could use a volunteer for whatever it is. Because that's where the most interaction happens is between the teacher and the parent.
That, but if you look at our, the two attachments that we gave you tonight for the sports team, there's quite a few volunteers in there. So we have a pretty healthy, I mean, not to say that we can't get more, but we do have a healthy commitment from the community to do some volunteer work. So we can certainly reach out and try to get more.
We need to work on marketing that, I think is.
You know, the idea being that, you know, for tutoring, I mean, there are people that are out there that can, you know, can perform simple tutoring skills, I mean, people who are retired, who, you know, wouldn't mind.
Are you looking for work?
Sort of. I know that, I know that this is a full process that has to be completed. I'm sorry, did it, Raptor process?
Raptor.
Raptor. It's a background search.
It's a, it's a, it's a national database to make sure we don't have people that we don't want volunteering.
We should have to do it in healthcare.
Right, same concept.
Okay, just an idea, I mean, something I wanted to carry over from the spring, that, you know, there are probably an awful lot of people out there who would volunteer, you know, you know, places like cafeteria and those kinds of things.
Great to hear. Yeah, we'll take that to heart. Okay, well, thank you.
Dr. Odd, I'll ask you a question about the policy on volunteers. I'm trying to remember back when we discussed the Raptor. Didn't, were we going to assess a fee to the people? It seems to me that when they registered through the, should, should the guidelines or the policy we adopt mention what that fee is going to be?
It is in the handbook section that's in it.
Oh, okay.
It says $4 that you bring in, check or, it goes through it in the handbook section that's attached to the document.
Okay, so it's not in the policy itself, but in the handbook portion of it?
I wanted to keep it in the handbook in case when we start to.
Oh, okay.
Buy new, like, new licenses, if you want to call them that, that if the cost goes up, you're going to have to continue to do the policy section. So it is listed.
I just didn't go far enough. I see that. I apologize.
No problem.
I, I just have a comment. If we're going to be recruiting more volunteers and not all of them might be familiar with our schools, they might be retired people. Education's changed a lot, even in the past 10 years. I mean, years ago, it was fine for somebody to hug a child. Now you have to be very careful about that. You can't be, put, you put yourself in a situation where you might be one-on-one. I'm wondering if there should be some type of, I don't want to get really.
Orientation?
Orientation, maybe offer a volunteer orientation.
Good idea.
A few times a year for interested people.
Might be a way, might be a good way to attract some people too.
Just like the guest teacher program, they did something on how to manage students.
Make it an event.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Only because things, things have really changed.
We already do that?
Yeah, individual schools do it.
Oh, okay. So maybe we can step up that and, yeah, okay. Maybe we can expand it.
A group of people will bring them in for a morning, 40 items.
Well, then maybe we need to.
Yeah, maybe the curriculum committee can take a look at what, what that is.
Let people know about that. Because people might say, gee, I might, might be interested in doing that, but I don't understand what it involves or, you know, I'm afraid to take on more than I can handle. But if they know.
What they're getting into.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You know.
It's a good idea.
There's an overview of that. That should get on the website as well. People could read it and see what a volunteer, what's involved.
Do you actually have a separate tab on the website?
Yeah, they put a link. What's it mean to volunteer or something like that?
I think there's, if you go to some of the websites that are out there for other school districts, for some reason, I think Tridoff and Easttown Township stands out, or that school district stands out in my head, is having a separate volunteer page, just all that information about how you volunteer and how you get involved in it. Maybe even OJ Roberts has one.
I know OJ has a Raptor, so.
But I think they, the way they're, they're marketing the volunteer.
Right.
Aspect of, of the district and what it involves and, you know. How you get involved, so.
Okay. No, we'll, we'll try to.
Any other comments from the public?
Did we talk about C?
Yes.
Yeah, he pulled together a bunch of different policies from different schools through PennLink.
Are we done with that? All right.
And will be presenting that to us in September.
First reading.
First reading in September.
Okay. We'll, we'll get into more detail later with it.
But until the first reading, we're still going to permit?
That, that's kind of where I was, that's where I was going. Yeah, that's where I was thinking.
Right.
If something should occur.
Well, it's going to take a couple of months before.
We almost have to let it. We've done it.
We've already set up practice that we're doing it, so we don't have to maintain it.
We just got to clean it up.
I don't have any trips planned myself, but just, you never know. That's sharp.
Message in the mailbox when you know.
I wait until budget season.
Okay, moving on to transportation.
Covered under.
Any old business? Mr. Shaheen?
Yeah, just, just one. As you may have seen my, the email, I was a little surprised that we're back here. I was fully prepared to go to the middle school because we had changed the meeting site to the middle school and had never officially changed it back to this location. I just want to get a board consensus. Are we back here permanently or are we going back to the middle school again?
I'll take the heat, by the way. I made the assumption you were coming back here, so.
I was under that assumption too.
No, no, the rest of us weren't.
Only because I remember in, in June, Mrs. Barr asked me how she should advertise it and I said, I don't know, we need to find out.
The thing was until further notice, we were at the middle school and further notice is still ongoing. Mr. Ross has assumed. Many of us.
Yeah, I was heading, I was going to add there too, I happened to check my email because.
I thought it was here. I, you know, I just assumed.
And I, and I had seen a, an email come out to the community saying, hey, don't forget it's changed back to here. And I said, well, like hell it is. Went online and looked and it said it was back here and that's why I sent the email out. I was fully prepared to go to the middle school.
Mr. Shaheen, shall we refrain from such language?
Whatever, I mean, whatever. I would say, and to follow in your comment, the security concern is obviously always there.
Right.
I don't, I don't want to get too, you know, lackadaisical about it. Obviously that's probably our most secure environment over there. Creates logistical issues for us to cart everything over there, but it's your call.
I mean, I think that obviously the purpose of moving over there was we could, we could, we had the speaker system set up, the PA system, whatever, so the people could hear us. There were more seats available, so more folks could attend. I just assumed, perhaps falsely, that, you know, once we got through the budget seating season, that the participation by the public would drop off precipitously and that we'd be back here again. But I don't have a problem.
I don't have an issue either way. I just think we need to make, make a, make a statement, make an announcement, say where it is.
It's easier to converse back and forth with board members here. Take us to all of them.
I, I just hate taking up the auditorium from students that could be using it.
Can we, can we make it here until we go back if we need to, budget time?
Again, I don't have a problem either. I just want to make, make it.
Yeah, I think it's worth discussing.
I think it. I won't be needing till the first of the year.
Well, not to mention, you have to remember too, if we have large crowds for presentations, it's very uncomfortable in this room.
Yeah, but then they're out here in 10 minutes.
Then again, it's uncomfortable in this room.
That doesn't happen in January. That doesn't happen in January. That's what I said. Not to be rude, we could go through the rest of this, this calendar year and nothing, that's something that's like no January.
Yeah, I don't care where we're at. I just want to make sure it's clear we all understand where we're at.
Us and the public.
Right, right. Because we don't want the public showing up at the wrong place and being angry.
They're all over their waiting to get in.
Or, probably. Or our.
That's what you thought. That was 20 minutes ago.
Just make sure attorney knows where he is in two weeks. He's in the wrong place.
Brian would have a problem with that.
Just make it a comment, make sure he knows.
Okay, so for the record, we're back here until further noticed.
Is that the consensus? Yes, I mean, I think that's tomorrow.
Okay, with that, I prefer it here. Okay.
Back down on the wall. Makes no matter.
Yeah. A little sense of security. All right, well, then that's settled. Mr. Shaheen had brought that up.
All right. Any, and under new business, we have a proposed graduation date?
Well, not, but basically this was a carryover from last year, but I, I think the discussion came up. I just wanted to get the board's input as to whether or not we want to continue to use the stadium or return to Sovereign Center. I think I know what the answer is, but I just want to make sure we discuss that. The date has to kind of be, if we go with the Sovereign Center, you kind of have to get.
I, I don't, I don't like, I mean, at least from my standpoint, it shouldn't be a pointed discussion. We moved from the stadium because we were starting construction. Construction's over, we're back at the stadium, I mean.
I don't know. I wouldn't want to spend the kind of money it takes to rent that building when we have vehicles.
I mean, we're, we're.
There's a sense of pride in getting graduation in your stadium.
Well, then what we'll do, if that's a consensus, we'll.
One, one complaint, and that is that the folks sitting on the visiting side, the speakers